Yeah, no, it.
Somebody asked me. Somebody asked me, I got another question, but you can't hear this. It says, "The only bank in New York that was owned in this county."
So what? That's the way I look at it.
I'm messing with you, you know that. Wait, here's a piece of. Without that other stuff, why are we putting that up there? Why are we putting that up there?
This is our, our new logo there. We put on this. It's going to talk to the house.
We talked about that the other day, but that wasn't necessary.
No, I said it wouldn't can't get away from you. You said it.
He said we can't get away from you. Windows said that.
No, Steve said it.
Steve, no, we need to use it.
Use it, your Glasgow, it's in your name, it's in your DNA.
You said we need to use it. He sees our use on everything, we need to use it. You said we're here for something else.
Guess what?
He, he was sleeping.
I just gotta say this, boy.
He was sleeping. Hey, this is, I'm gonna do this.
What is your name?
That was a square.
Oh.
Square.
Word.
I like to see that.
I don't even, I don't even like this. I don't even like that we have a square. It should be, no, we should have one, but it shouldn't have be hit by trucks. It should be, if we're gonna be English, it should be cobblestone, and then you could have all of them.
Oh. You're wrong. It's tough to walk on.
It's hard, it's hard to walk.
It's uneven. Did you go to Savannah?
Oh, God.
You were on the damn wood down in the hallway. I don't wanna hear that shit by people.
No, they go, well, we got called him, man.
I let him fall.
Let him fall, I called him.
Because he's 300 pounds.
I called him when you catch him.
He weighed 400 pounds.
You wanted to catch the man.
He weighed over 400.
I said, "Get the police." I called him.
He can handle it.
I'm on, I'm on 590.
Just joining prayer. Our most gracious Father, we come before you tonight thanking you for this day. Father, we thank you for the care that you've shown to us today, have you watched over us. Father, you bring us tonight to this meeting, we pray that you'll help us in our decisions, our insight, in the direction we take for this community, we're grateful for this council and for our mayor, this community of citizens that call this home, for the business and industry that's here, Father. We're grateful for what we know as Glasgow. Father, tonight we celebrate you and all you've done for us. And as we do reflect upon our city, Father, we're thankful for our heritage and for the opportunity that provides to all of us. Father, tonight, we're very mindful of the events that happened 21 years ago. Father, we think of the men and women who lost their lives and served mankind, who ran into buildings and did things that an ordinary person wouldn't do. Father, we're so grateful that the sacrifice that was made for all of us, for freedom, for democracy, and show compassion. Father, we're thankful in this community for men and women who run into buildings not knowing what they're gonna see or hear. Folks that answer the call. People who receive a telephone call and talk with individuals that have tragedy in their life and need direction and need a response. Father, we continue to call upon you to love us, grant us your peace and your mercy, through Christ we pray, amen.
Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Banelle.
Present.
Gontz. Honeycutt. Kirkpatrick.
Yes, ma'am.
Lowry.
Here.
Neil.
Here.
Norris.
Yeah.
Trig.
Witcher.
All present. We have, in front of you, you have the council meeting minutes of Monday, August the 22nd. If you've had time to look over those, if you have no deletions or corrections, I'll accept the motion to accept those minutes as, as printed.
Motion by Witcher.
Motion by Councilmember Witcher.
Second by Banelle.
Second by Councilmember Banelle. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, minutes are passed. First item is unfinished business, the second reading of ordinance number 2022 on ordinance accepting use of the city, Glasgow City Logo is presented from Chandler Thinks LLC from modern representation of today's communication for speaking to residents, visitors, and businesses alike.
City of Glasgow ordinance number 2022 blank, ordinance accepting use of City of Glasgow Logo as presented from Chandler Thinks LLC from modern representation of today's communications for speaking to residents, businesses, or visitors. Whereas the City of Glasgow Strategic Planning Committee partnered with the Glasgow Baron County Community Foundation and contracted Chandler Thinks LLC for the sole purpose of branding, creating a new logo for the City of Glasgow, reference resolution number 2021-2498. And whereas the City of Glasgow Strategic Planning Committee has met with Chandler Thinks LLC and have agreed upon is recommending to this Glasgow City Council to select option 3A as attached here to as exhibit A. And whereas the proposed color palette rationale maintains the feel of Glasgow agriculture heritage in connection to the outdoors, the cooler blues are used to create a story of opportunity and professionalism. And whereas the proposed logo moves Glasgow forward with a modern and professional representation, purposefully straightforward and without additional graphics beyond its name, showing modern municipal government is approachable and type style reflects confidence in traditions. Whereas Chandler Thinks LLC has created a complete identity standards guide pertaining to the city logos such as color usage and shape. Now therefore be it hereby ordained by the City of Glasgow, Kentucky as follows. Section number one. The City of Glasgow accepts a new City of Glasgow Logo designed by Chandler Thinks LLC, which is all caps Glasgow type style being a modified version of Popo Rust and is blue PMS 5405. The name is curved slightly and centered. The smaller and all caps Kentucky is type style Milk Store O3 Clean and is green PMS 575. It is centered beneath the Glasgow name, a small round bullet is on both sides of the Glasgow name also in PMS 575. Section number two. The change to city property and other uses of the city logo will be gradual and implemented over time. Section number three. This ordinance is adopted pursuant to KRS 838.060 and said ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon passage, signature, and publication. Harold Armstrong Mayor, Mona Simmons City Clerk. First reading, August 22nd, 2022. Second reading, September 12th, 2022.
Having heard this second reading, do I have a motion to accept?
Motion by Banelle.
Motion to Councilmember Banelle. Second, Norris. Second by Councilmember Norris. End of discussion. Harry Dunn will have a little call vote.
Honeycutt.
Yes.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes, ma'am.
Lowry.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Norris.
Yes.
Trig.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
Banelle.
Yes.
Gontz.
Yes, ma'am.
Next item is the second reading ordinance 2022, an ordinance closing accessway approximately 10 feet in width located the length of the building behind East Washington Street to pedestrian traffic. To leave for pedestrian traffic only.
City of Glasgow ordinance number 2022 blank, an ordinance closing accessway approximately 10 feet wide, located length of buildings behind East Washington Street to pedestrian traffic only. That whereas pursuant to KRS 82.405, all the property owners in or abutting that certain portion of a public way specifically being accessway located behind buildings along East Washington Street attached here to as exhibit A, as shown on the diagram attached here to as exhibit B, have consented to the closing of said public way. And whereas written consents pursuant to KRS 82.405 have been signed by all of the property owners in or abutting the public way proposed to close. Now therefore be it hereby ordained by the City of Glasgow as follows. Section number one. Pursuant to KRS 82.405 subsection two, the following filings of fact are made. A. The property owners in or abutting the public way proposed to be closed are Tim Gooden, owner, 111 East Washington Street, Bobby Richardson, owner, 117 and 119 East Washington Street, and 121 East Washington Street, and Beth Wagner, owner, 111 South Broadway Street. The proposed closing has been agreed upon by all of the previously mentioned property owners in or abutting the public way or portion thereof being closed. C. All the previously mentioned property owners have given their notarized written consent to the closing, and the written consent is attached here to as exhibit A. Section number two. There will be a removable non-access point posted at each end of the proposed accessway closure or deliveries as indicated on the attached diagram, exhibit A. Section three. This ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its date of passage, signature, and publication as required by law. Harold Armstrong Mayor attests, Mona Simmons City Clerk. First reading, August 22nd, 2022. Second reading, September 12th, 2022.
Having heard the second reading, do I have a question to approve?
Motion, Lowry.
Second by Councilmember Kirkpatrick. Being second reading, we'll have a roll call vote.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes, ma'am.
Lowry.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Norris.
Yes.
Trig.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
Banelle.
Yes.
Gontz.
Yes, ma'am.
Honeycutt.
Yes.
Second reading passes. Next item is new, it's new business. We have an architect from Architect Farm, a representative of AOC, a huge official center to show a concept and to ask for an option to purchase a portion of the city property to complete the signage necessary for the building of this site. And at this time, Judge Al Tanger, going out of any doubt, an architect.
I'll, I'll just let them introduce themselves, Mayor, if that's okay.
Mayor Armstrong, council members appreciate the time that you've given us to come and make this presentation. My name is Danny Rhodes. I'm the executive officer of the Department of Court Facilities at the Administrative Office of the Courts. Been on this project since the General Assembly approved it in 2020. And, you know, been coming and, and meeting with the PDB. Before I introduce Project Architect, Tom Potts, I do want to let you know that the presentation that you're about to see, AOC is in full support of this, the site boundaries that, that we're proposing. We, we have, that recommendation came from the PDB, and the AOC has approved that, that recommendation. That site boundary does meet all of the program requirements for square footage, parking, pedestrian exterior traffic, as well as our public, public and staff and secure parking for our elected officials. So at this time, I'll let Tom give his presentation, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to, to answer those as well as Tom, so.
Thank you, Danny. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, good evening, Council. Give me a moment here and I'll get this plugged in, we'll see if it works here. Okay. Well, that's turning on again. My, my name is Tom Potts. I am with Silling Architects. We are based out of Charleston, West Virginia, and I'm actually, my office is in Orlando, Florida. My experience is, I've been with the firm some 30 years, and my specialty is courthouse, courthouse design, planning, programming, and what have you. We were hired by the Administrative Office of the Courts, I think, back in March of last year, really to start the process of, of site identification, site selection, and moving forward. Let me see if I can't, I don't know why this is not. We did have it on when we started, and now, of course, it's not on. Okay, here we go.
As.
As Mr. Rhodes said, we have, this has been somewhat of a long road for us for the last almost 18 months. There have been a number of sites that we've considered that are, would be appropriate to fulfill all of the programmatic requirements of the court. And that includes the building and the property and the, all of the site circulation and what have you. And so it's our, it's our position that this, I believe this strongly, that this is the, would be one of the most important, if not the most important, public building constructed in the City of Glasgow and in the county for decades, and for decades to come for what it represents. So it's a, it's a, obviously a matter of serious consideration. The site that you, the properties that you see up there, hopefully you recognize as a West Main Street. On the bottom right-hand corner of that image, you could see the kind of home plate figuration there, which is the City of Glasgow Water Company. The parking lot to its plan north. To the direct left or to the west is the Dollar General, and then there is the Glass Company that is directly north of it. That is Water Street in the middle, and then the site is, I don't know if this will, maybe this will help me out here. Yeah, here we go. I think this is, is, is it Ford Drive, I think, that's coming down here, is what that is. So it might be a little bit difficult to, to see the black lines, but what you could, if you could notice them, you could see them here and here. Those are all the, we've had the properties surveyed by a licensed surveyor to identify the boundaries. It's a boundary survey, it's not a typographical survey, it's a boundary survey to identify the meets and bounds of, of the property, the amount of acreage that we're talking about. And there are, you know, you, you can see, you know, kind of configuration of all of this, all of this property. So this, kind of laying over the top of that is this next, next image. And what this is, is some, kind of a summary of the properties that we need in order to develop the project. And so what we're proposing to do is, is to be able to take, to have the Dollar General, the, the Glass Company, the, the property that is north of Water Street. This tab and including Ford Drive, it doesn't show here, but that should be colored in there as well, as the piece of property that we would have. All of this area here in order to be able to develop, the, to be able to develop the project. It totals about 4.3 acres, and we have an official survey which, with the actual numbers, but that, that's the rough area that is necessary. And, and that lays out in this manner. And I think it's important for everyone to know that this is the beginning step of a design. It is not the design. What we call this is basically, it's a test fit study. The Administrative Office of the Courts provides us standard documents or standard information to define what the size of the building needs to be with all of its components. We're able to, to understand how the spaces are to relate to one another within site building, and to be able to arrive at a gross square footage of the building, and how the building would stack on the lower floor, the main floor, and then the second floor. So what you're seeing there in that kind of cream color on the bottom right-hand side is a theoretical building massing that meets the AOC court standards. And then what you're seeing is some suggestion of the way that the building would relate to Main Street in a public plaza. For those of you who know about this property, you know that it does slope from Main Street down to Water Street, then it goes back up the hill. What we're proposing to do is to have a drive, drive aisle that connects Main Street back to Water Street, and then you could see the various parking capacities. I think the total that we've got in here is, is roughly 230 spaces, and that meets the programmatic requirements of public for juries, for staff. And then there's also areas for ADA parking, and then there's also a, a drive-in area to be able to accommodate in custody defendants who are being transported from the jail when necessary into the building. This again is a thumbnail study. It is not, you know, we haven't, there's no building elevations at this point. It's only a test to see if we could recommend that this property indeed will work for the courts. You could see some, some suggestion of imagery up here. You know, again, that this, this building will take on, it will have, it will have, the design process will have a, in pretty much a life of its own as we explore what the outside of the building needs to be, what the building materials are, the scale of all of its elements for, for a building that's really appropriate for downtown Glasgow. And so you can also see, again, we've overlaid, you know, carried forth those property lines that show, you know, again, the property that we're interested in and how that will, will be able to serve the, the building. So at this time, I, I would say I'd certainly entertain any questions that you might have, and perhaps maybe Mr. Rhodes or anybody else with the courts might be able to address.
So sir, you said it was four point something acres for the total thing, but that's including Dollar Store, the Glass Building, and then whatever decision y'all work out with the Glasgow Water Company. So for the City of Glasgow, how much would you be asking for in total acreage?
The upper left-hand corner of this, this property that is here is 1.07 acres. This property next to it is 1.1 acres. This purple tab here, blue tab here is .67 acres. And that we would also ask for, we'd also ask for the street to be able to complete it. Chrissy, on this email.
The street is .42.
Thank you.
So it's 3.16.
Yeah. 3.16. Including, and that includes the street.
The Dollar General's half acre, and then the other parts, almost three quarters of acreage.
Yeah, Dollar General is .4, roughly .4, and the Glass, the Glass Company is .3, excuse me, the Water Company is .27. Yeah, the strip behind it is the, that's the Glasgow Water Company that's .27. That lime green piece there.
And so it's my understanding that your 30 years of professional experience says that that 2.84 plus the .42 is sufficient property purchased from the city to do what you need to do?
All of these properties that are colored plus the street, yes, ma'am, is, it's, it's our opinion that that will serve the needs of the facility. And that's our recommendation to the AOC and to the Project Development Board.
Yeah, just, you said earlier, this goes with the PDB board, AOC, your architects, everybody's thumbs up, right?
Oh, absolutely. Okay.
Any other questions? Would you clarify, Mayor, if any, and if there's any other, any other board members coming in, courthouse here, or anybody else that's with the firm or with AOC? If you have any other comments or questions of us, we'd be glad to try and answer them.
I think I, well, you open it up. Oh, oh, yes. Let, let me, let me tell them what, we have the, the survey on all of this has been, as, as Mr. Potts was saying, has been completed. And so we've got the actual, I guess you would call it, I mean, it's meets and bounds, right? So you've got the actual meets and bounds with the, and, and most of you have seen a survey before, so you know it's a pin here and a pin there, and it's that many feet. So it's got the exact acreage for each piece of property, and of course. Oh, yeah, and, and I think Mr. Tut knows about that with American Engineers. But we've got, to answer your question, Mr. Trig, the, the, of course, we're dealing separately with Dollar General, and we're dealing separately with the Water Company. And, you know, we've kind of made similar, just had similar discussions with them, and everybody's interested in making sure that they're all, I feel like they're all willing to go, it's just a question of, you know, this is the largest component of it, and so they want to make sure that we're gonna be able to make this work with the city before we can get those other things taken care of. But if we can get this part taken care of, then I think we're home free on the rest of it. Hey, John, when would, when will the survey be ready for us to vote on what the dimensions are, official, whatever? You got it now? I don't have it, I, uh. Yeah. I, I, I was in, I was in court all day, and I didn't get to say, there were emails coming in, and, but I believe, and you tell me if I'm wrong, but I believe that they, yeah, they've got, I just don't, we didn't have anything to print out to everybody, but they've got the, uh. I know everybody can't see it because it's so small, but they've got the aerial with the lines overlaid on it, and then the, the plats all drawn out with, just like you see, with the deed book and page number, and who's got what, and how big it is, and all that. And I believe all of those things, yeah, there we go, Tom, thank you.
I just got this poll already, and it's 20 pages now, I think this is the same thing you got.
It is, it is, Mayor. And I think we, we had asked, one of the things that we're gonna ask Danny to do is talk with you just about the, the legalities of how something would have to be written up if we were gonna do it, who you would be if you do sell it to us, who and what wording it would have, and that kind of thing. So he can have that in case you all want, want us to give you that, so that we know exactly what it needs to say.
I think we can write you a, 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 well, you have an option to purchase with these numbers that you give us.
I don't disagree with you, yeah.
Provided, and we have an appraisal, and provided, and we have this as a recorded survey.
Yes.
It's just, it's not to the magistrates. It's not to the magistrates.
Yeah, we, yeah, the, the, he's, he can tell you what it needs, what it needs to legally say because the, 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 well, you tell me.
So the, I think the, the resolution that was proposed for this was an agreement between the, the Baron County Magistrates, as it was worded, and the, the city for this property. The Baron County Public Properties Corporation will actually be the deed holder as long as we have bonds in place for the project. Those are, will be 20-year bonds. So the Baron County Public Properties Corporation, as, as I mentioned, the option to purchase agreement would be with the Baron County Public Properties Corporation and the city. Once those bonds are paid off, then the deed would revert back to the Baron County Fiscal Court after that period. Public Properties Corporation. Yes.
And do we need to put in this resolution, that total number that we came up with, 3.16 acres? Is that appropriate, or does that make sense?
Yeah, if, if the, if the, the committee wants to, that, I think that's fine.
Yeah, we need to put this specific acreage in the register.
And it's, that, that's based off of the boundary survey, so.
And, and, I hate to be, Mayor, I also think, like, I think you mentioned this or suggested this, I think you could, you could attach. you could, you could attach this, couldn't you do that, Mr. Basil?
Absolutely.
Yeah, you could attach this, yeah, and then that would be, that has all the details in it where you wouldn't have to turn around and rewrite them if you didn't want to, it would just be Exhibit A or whatever.
Do you have, one of these sheets have the numbers 3.17 written on that, like, do you do that?
There it is. That's it, acres by.
Chase, would be, of course, it is. Ladies and gentlemen, I have the group.
There's that.
The streets. We're not, we're not really the owners of that, we would have to close that down and put that in as if we were the, not the owners, but the custodian, I guess you'd say.
And I think you closed the city of the property, and had the Dollar Store properties, and the document should reflect any concessions due to closing the street.
Just don't, America, to go to the owners, you go on to both properties, and then go to public.
Is that currently deeded to the?
The street?
Yes.
It probably has an old deed, or we took over that fate, but without doubt, I can't remember, it was about two weeks before my time, I was about 10:30, so I don't know.
Roger might know if this is re-maintained, see?
It is maintained, because it might not be a city owner, it could just be a city maintained. We have properties, streets, and cities that are, that are owned and maintained, we know so, just matter of fact. The deal with anything from 50 on has been deeded to the city.
Okay.
Be the way we'll make it before it goes to that property.
What you're going to lay your expectation? The deed should reflect the property as described, any concessions to that property result of closing the street, and put that in the deed.
If we could please just clarify, just so that I can see this, can we list the land by plot? I know you said 1.07 acres, 1.1 acres, and .67. I'd like to be very specific about where that acreage lands.
We'll have to put on the block that you have, that they describe, as lots such and such, lots of so and so, lots of so and so, and where should it be there now?
So.
Got to miss 1A, 1B.
To clarify on what you're showing there, this upper left-hand corner is not part of what we're discussing, right? So it's, just to make sure that they know this, it looks like Neapolitan ice cream right there.
Yeah, that's right.
That's not, yeah.
Yeah, it, yes, on this, on this survey here, it, this parcel, if you could see the cursor, that is 1.2 acres.
That's because it's got a remainder at the front, it's spaced with the city, correct?
Yeah, that was in that gray part, yeah.
Sure, yes.
So what you're looking at is the 1.07 of the flat?
1.07.
All right, G7 dash two, whatever. John, would it be easier, because there's less in the green, if you go back to that color, to just say we're selling everything other than that, and whatever that would be, east or west of that, rather than trying to get each one of the, you know what I'm saying?
That's right. That's right.
We don't have a date.
Yeah.
My question is, at one.
One picture, a colored picture. No, you have to see, right, that, there's a tab, there's a tab right there that is west that, that area, and.
Is that built in there? Is there a size built in on that? Can I read this?
That's what I'm saying.
I can't see it, it's too.
Yeah, that, that area is actually, according to this drawing, is 1.07 acres.
All right, yeah, that's what, yeah.
That's what's going, not what's staying, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so it would be 1.07 of the 1.26.
That's right, that's right.
And then what about the one in front by the post office?
That is .67.
Correct.
I'm sorry, which one?
Where he's got his person.
Yeah.
Well, that property three, we're not, we're not interested in.
I understand that, I'm just trying to.
How big is it, you're asking?
Yeah, I'm just trying to say, is it, because we've got one, two, three, I think we have four, five lots, we've got a.
That, that property is 1.3 acres.
And John, would it be nice to say easier, lighter, than these people say, to draw this stuff to work, and I want it right.
We can, with this resolution, take an option with these parts here, and then once the appraisal comes back, and we can take it and put it in legal descriptions before we make, if they exercise the option. I think tonight, they just want to know that we're willing to let them, not stop the project, let this go forward. Am I correct, Judge?
You're correct, sir.
So we can change some wording, and we can vote to sell what property's been represented here tonight, per appraisal, and itemizing these lot, it'll be called City Lot Number One, City Lot Number Two, City Lot Number Three.
And I think you could even, it has been suggested, and I think is right, you could even attach, if we have that capacity, attach this color overlay that Mr. Potts and those guys have come up with, and identify it on that basis, you could say this, these lots, these orange shaded spots and this purple, blue spot are the spots.
And then there's a ground would be Lot 1A.
You saw it on there.
Yeah, don't listen to me because I'm colored line, but one of these people that knows colors.
Would be Lot 1B, and the front would be, I'm saying, marking on it, we'll call this 1C.
There's 1A, 1B, and Property Two, but again, this, this does not include, and we've got another illustration that does include the street.
Street, okay.
Yes.
Hey, John?
Quick question, what, how much was the property in the upper left-hand corner? I think you called it Neapolitan?
Yeah, well, I was, I was referring to that lot next to it, that's not owned by you guys, that has all the trees on it. That's actually three different plots, and it was on that, that plat, but we're not talking about, you all don't own that, so we're not asking you all to sell it, I was just trying to.
So John, would it be enough to say, we got a thumbs up on what we just agreed on, but tomorrow, whenever, they could lay this out, I mean, could we come back tomorrow and special call, or Zoom vote, or?
Yeah, I guess I have to, I mean, you know, I've never done this, so I'd have to find out from Danny, what, what, what we need to satisfy you all, vice versa, and, and, obviously we want to cooperate every way we can, so we'll do whatever it is that you all need us to do.
We do, if we can vote on the resolution, says everybody's willing to do this, and then we can put legal information, put it in form of an option to purchase, if that's what you decide.
Yeah, I mean, maybe if we could just, if we could just get a commitment, or what we would be asking from you all is to get a commitment to give us an option on the property that's consistent with this presentation, and with these plats that have been drawn up, and then, of course, we'll get the details in there later.
And for the other properties, the PDB has drawn up option to purchase agreements for those, the Dollar General and the Glasgow Water property, so, I mean, I'm assuming we would do the same thing with that, with the city part.
That's fine. We can, we can vote on a rough resolution tonight, so you'll know that we're, everybody's in agreement, we're going to do this, and we'll take that, come back and take that option, and it's legal, and then make that as part of the court.
Right, yeah, I mean, I feel like the other two entities that we're dealing with, which of course is the Water Company and Dollar General, but they're kind of, they're smaller parts of this whole, and they're wanting to make sure that we can get, that we have an option to purchase the big part, and then we'll be able to go back to them and say, yeah, we got the option to purchase the big part, and then they'll be willing to give us an option to purchase it.
Our Mr. Potts went on forward, like I said, this body is not going to stand in the way of most important project to that. And now that we've done some stuffs and votes of it, I think it'll be, it'll be good enough, if we get a resolution, then we'll do the legal work when y'all, if you want. Unless I have, unless I have objection to that, I think we all have, vote on the resolution for, according to what's way out front of you, the resolution as far as giving a option to purchase.
So this resolution will give us the opportunity to come back and vote to finalize all the paperwork, correct?
Yes.
That nothing will be added to the acreage or taken from it?
It's 3.26 acres.
Yeah.
And I mean, I think it changes, being the street, and we're in command over hitting that option.
To y'all, it says in here a 90-day option. I mean, does that give you, because there's still enough?
That's not theirs.
Huh?
That's not theirs.
That's not theirs. They'll give us a guarantee.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know that we've said how long the option would be, but obviously, it's, we're, we're in the, we're in the process of, we're needing, we're needing to move quick, because, tell them, tell them about the.
Related to 90 days on your schedule.
Related to the, related to the 90 days, the 90 days will allow us to get interim financing in place to close on these properties. Bond anticipation notes have to be issued for that interim financing. We can't issue bond anticipation notes until we know what the cost of the site's going to be, that'll let us determine how much money we're borrowing, basically, for those. But related to the, I guess, the urgency to go ahead and get this property purchased, and, and, you know, to where we can start, you know, looking at moving forward with the design, you know, as I mentioned, this project was authorized in 2020, so we're over two years, basically, in the process of trying to get a design in place, so that's, you know, obviously, the board, the PDB, we've exhausted many options as far as looking at properties, so we're, we're ready to move forward with this one.
Mayor, I'd like to make a resolution, or make a motion to move forward with the option to buy.
I have a motion, I have a second. It's going to change, but we can bring it in, some content like we have, and then we get the facts, we can go back and revise.
And you can amend it if that's implied.
Well, then, with that, we get the exact facts.
Would you be interested?
Well, I think he's got a question.
Well, can I, is it appropriate for me to tell you something?
You can tell us what I'm up to, Judge.
I, I want to make sure if you do amend it, which it needs to say that it's the Public Properties Committee, or Corporation, I'm sorry, which is co-terminous with the.
Barron County Public.
It's more, it's more for the purpose of doing all this, so that it's not, so that there's a division of.
Barron County Public Court LLC.
Barron County Public Properties Corporation.
Public Property, not Public Court.
Public Properties Corporation.
I mean, this may not be possible, but I know in our last conversation, our last meeting, we weren't able to modify the resolution that came from the magistrates.
That's because they gave it to us.
Okay, so they didn't give us this one?
No, no, I did this.
This, this next day?
Once I, I did this resolution we got.
Okay, I was just confused.
To try to monitor what they'd already got.
Okay, so basically Danny's just writing a new one, because we're taking most of the wordage out of this.
He's going to read this one like it is, and then we'll amend it as we need to, to fit their needs. The only thing that won't be amended is the size of the property and the partials that they're offering for.
Yeah, this, this picture that we're showing y'all is all we're going to be asking, all we are asking for, and all we're going to be asking for.
Okay, I have a first, do I have a second?
You want me to read it first?
Yeah, let's, let's read it first, and then we'll make the motion.
City of Glasgow Resolution Number 2022, a resolution for the City of Glasgow to enter into an option to purchase agreement with, and this says Barron County Magistrates, now that will be amended in an amendment as soon as it's, it'll be changed to Barron County, we can't amend it till we put it before the court and get a person second.
Read it, and then we'll amend it.
With Barron County Magistrates to sell property for a new judicial center contingent upon appraisal and survey, whereas the City of Glasgow owns property in a city that's become essential to complete the project of a new judicial center, upon therefore a 90-day option to purchase agreement will be requested, and now therefore be it hereby resolved by the City of Glasgow, Kentucky, that the Glasgow City Council is hereby agreed to accept the proposal from the Barron County Magistrates of an option to purchase property. This proposal is contingent upon appraisal and survey. This proposal is a 90-day option to purchase agreement, tentatively expiring December 12, 2022. Therefore, the Mayor of the City of Glasgow is authorized and directed to execute the agreement for and on behalf of the city, and the city clerk is authorized and directed to attest such signatures so adopted this 12th of September, 2022. Harold Armstrong, Mayor, attest, Mona Simmons, City Clerk, and this will be amended, once there's a second, a motion and a second, it will be amended to reflect that the purchase agreement will be with the Barron County Public Properties Corporation, and I'm thinking there's going to be an amendment attaching the plat to it as a tentative description of the property.
So we got a first, now we need a second, and then we can do the amendment. So we got a second, the councilman nailed it. Now can we?
Yeah.
Make a motion for amendment.
I move we amend it to say it's the Barron County Public Properties Corporation that we're dealing with, and to attach that as Exhibit A to further identify the properties.
Could we further that?
Needs to be seconded.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
We have a second to that amendment?
I'll second.
You have a first and a second?
We'd like to make another amendment.
Well, we need to put as presented to the Glasgow Council on September 12, because that's part of their presentation, is what we've just seen.
If it's attached, it can't change.
Okay. I just think clarification goes a long way, so there's no doubt.
Okay, dated.
Could we also specifically say 3.26 acres?
Per attached survey.
Per attached survey.
That 3.26 doesn't count the road, right?
It does, it's 2.84 if you take off the road.
It includes the road.
Right, 3.26 includes the road, 2.84 without the street.
We'll have to put that language, it also, needs to be amended, saying that the 3.26 contains four drive.
Contains 4.2 of the road.
Okay.
Chase, how much we got the road? Without the street, it's 2.84.
Is everybody straight on that? Has been amended to read as such, have a first and a second, on the, I guess we have to do the amendment, right? All those in favor of amendment, six, five, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, amendment passes. Now do we have to go back to the?
Motion as amended.
Motion as amended. We have a, we need a first.
Now done, got it.
Just need to vote.
Need to discuss it if you want to.
You got any discussion?
Yeah.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Basil, do you have to read that again?
I can't remember all that.
Well, I just have one question really quick, does that leave 2.15 acres?
Doesn't matter what it leaves on you. You're talking about what it leaves, what we own?
Yes.
They're not asking about that.
I am.
Well, I don't know, did you, it's been surveyed, I don't know if that's taken off of what we own, I don't know.
Okay.
I think he said it was 1.75, and that one, and what's behind it there, it probably is 2 acres, I don't know.
1.3 to the left of the blue, and what was the total acreage that included? I know the blue part's .6 something, the total before it was removed, it's also about 1.1. 1.26, okay.
So we'll attach this color thing, be attached.
Given them an option to buy, that's all we need to be involved with, because the rest of the party's still there. All those approve, signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Those disapprove, like sign. Thank you all. We have finally reached a decision, and we get the legal work together, and y'all can get things lined up.
May I ask a question?
If it doesn't contain what we got left.
I would just like to honor all the work that's gone into all the people that have worked behind the scenes, those at your level, the state level, I just really appreciate, even though we've butted heads at times, that there's been some cooperation, I just want to sort of highlight that, please. And also, Mr. John, would you say something about the old building before you leave? I'm getting a lot of questions about what's going to happen to the old building.
Can you just say something about?
For the citizens, please, for the cit.
Do you mind touching?
That'd be fine.
Okay.
I agree with you, and it'd be good to get an answer out of them.
Thank you, counsel, and that's a great, get this microphone up here so the people in the back can hear. That's a great question, that's something that I've been talking about since we started this project. By the time this project is completed, I'm talking about the new project, this old courthouse would just be about paid for. If not, it would like just very little to be paid for. Currently, we've been setting money back, just so when this project is done, if there's something left to pay for, we can just go ahead and pay it off. That way, we're not paying on it anymore. My vision is this, is to move the government operation back to the courthouse. Now, it needs some TLC. It needs some cosmetic work, okay? At that point, we will have two buildings in Barron County that are free and clear. We won't owe any money on either one of them. But moving the operation back, all the operations of the courthouse, will allow the county clerk's office, who is on top of each other now, have access to more record keeping, obviously with the vault and the circuit clerk's office. And then their staff will be able to spread out a little bit more. The sheriff's office, they're on top of each other now, so they need more room as well. So get them in that building. My plans for the government center is I would like to make some type of incubator, economic development incubator building out of it. There's three floors. If we have, just say, for instance, IT companies that want to locate here, we use one of those floors to help them get on their feet for 12, 16, 18 months, and then move them to a permanent facility. But I believe that that would be very viable to our community as an incubator, business incubator building. Again, it will be paid for, so we will be able to do the necessary improvements to our current courthouse, because it is a beautiful courthouse. But we know that we have to do some handicap accessible things to it. There are some areas in the foundation that needs to be looked at. The administrative offices of the court has graciously took care of the outside of it, and just pretty much what we ask them to do, they'll come along and do that for us. And they have went above and beyond. So that's sort of what I'm looking at, my vision for it. That's something that I would like to sell the new fiscal court on, coming in. So any questions is what I've said so far? Any suggestions? I'll take. Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Hey, just to follow up on Freddie, thank all y'all, but thank American Engineers too, because y'all hung in there through all this stuff, so. Wes Simpson, thank you, and Judge, all y'all's group, I appreciate it.
The 2022 tax rate for the City of Glasgow.
City of Glasgow Ordinance Number 2022 dash blank, an ordinance establishing the 2022 tax rate for the City of Glasgow be it hereby ordained by the City of Glasgow, Kentucky as follows. Section number one, that there is hereby levied an ad valorem tax for the general fund of 0.172 per $100 of assessed value on real property and 0.176 per $100 of assessed value on personal property subject to taxation for municipal purposes and having taxable status in the City of Glasgow, Kentucky as of the first day of January, 2022, as listed in the tax assessment ledgers compiled by the Barron County Property Evaluation Administrator. Section two, all monies collected from this tax shall be paid into the general fund of the city to be used for payment of proper expenditures as determined by the council. Section three, is further provided that all taxpayers that may owe taxes under the levy shall pay same to the city tax collector on or before January 31, 2023. Any taxpayer who pays his or her bill under this levy on or before November 30, 2022, shall be allowed a discount of 2% of the total tax bill. Those paying on or before December 30, 2022, shall be allowed a discount of 1% of the total tax bill. It is further provided that to the tax bill of all payers who fail to pay same on or before January 31, 2023, there shall be added by way of penalty an amount equal to 6% of the total tax bill, and upon the total tax bill plus penalty, there shall be charged interest at the rate of 6% per annum from February 1, 2023, until paid, and such delinquent taxpayers shall also pay all costs and expenses incidental to any action taken by the city for all the collection of such delinquent tax bills. Section four, delinquent taxes shall be collected on the provisions of the Kentucky revised statutes relating to the collection of delinquent taxes by the City of the Third Class. Section five, if any of this ordinance shall be declared invalid for any reason, it shall not affect the remainder of said ordinance. All ordinances in conflict here with or hereby repealed to the extent they may conflict. Section six, this ordinance shall be enforced from and after its proper passage and publication as required by law. Harold Armstrong, Mayor, attest, Mona Simmons, City Clerk, first reading September 12, 2022.
Having heard the first reading of this ordinance, do I have a motion to accept?
Motion, Lowry.
Have a motion by Councilmember Lowry, and a second by Councilmember Patrick. All those in favor, sitting by, saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, first reading passes. Next item is ordinance number, first reading of ordinance number 2022, ordinance enacting and adopting supplement 2022 S-53 to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Glasgow, Kentucky.
City Vice Ordinance Number 2022, an ordinance enacting and adopting supplement 222 S-53 to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Glasgow, Kentucky. Whereas the American Legal Publishing Corporation of Cincinnati, Ohio, has completed the 2022 S-53 supplement to the Code of Ordinances, Exhibit A, of the City of Glasgow, which supplement contains all ordinances of a general nature enacted since the prior supplement to the Code of Ordinances of this municipality. And whereas the American Legal Publishing Corporation has recommended the revision or addition of certain sections of the Code of Ordinances, which are based on or make reference to sections of the Kentucky revised statutes. And whereas it is the intent of council to accept these updated sections in accordance with the changes of the laws of the Commonwealth of Kentucky. Now therefore be it ordained by the City of Glasgow, Kentucky. Section one, that the 2022 S-53 supplement to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Glasgow, Kentucky, as submitted by American Legal Publishing Corporation of Cincinnati, and is attached here to as Exhibit A, will be in the same as hereby adopted by reference as if set out in its entirety. Section two, that this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its date of passage, approval, and publication as required by law. Harold Armstrong, Mayor, attest, Mona Simmons, City Clerk, first reading September 12, 2022.
Having heard the first reading of this ordinance, do I have a motion to accept?
Motion by Benel.
Second, Norris. Motion by Councilmember Benel, second by Councilmember Benel. All of them.
You said hold.
First one was a nail, second one. All of, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, first reading passes. Next item is ordinance, first reading of ordinance 2022 dash, an ordinance amending Glasgow zoning ordinance, rezoning property located approximately 1,200 feet northeast of the Happy Valley Road and north El Rogers Wells Boulevard, established at the intersection of Magnolia Drive and north El Rogers Wells Boulevard, containing 6 acres to be rezoned.
City of Glasgow Ordinance Number 2022, an ordinance dash blank, an ordinance amending Glasgow zoning ordinance, rezoning property located approximately 1,200 feet northeast of the Happy Valley Road and north Roger Wells Boulevard intersection, and at the intersection of Magnolia Drive and north El Roger Wells Boulevard, containing 6 acres, under review 10.95 acres more or less, from B2 General Business District to I1 Light Industrial District. It appearing that Doug Piles applicant and Danny Gibson and wife Miriam Gibson owners have requested a zoning change for the property located approximately 1,200 feet northeast of the Happy Valley Road and north El Rogers Wells Boulevard intersection of Magnolia Drive and El Rogers Wells Boulevard, containing 6 acres, under review 10.95 acres more or less. A schematic of said property subject to rezoning is attached here to as Exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference. A trial-type due process hearing concerning said proposed zoning change was held on July 18, 2022 at 7:00 PM by the Joint City-City Planning and Zoning Commission, resulting in the recommendation by the commission that the property here and after described be rezoned from B2 General Business District to I1 Light Industrial District classification. Attached to said zone changes, zone change are the following binding elements agreed upon by the applicant to be enforced for the benefit of the neighborhood. A, mini storage warehousing is the only industrial use for the property and as shown in the concept drawing. B, no access is to occur along Magnolia Drive for the mini storage development. C, all lots along Magnolia Drive shall be residential for single-family housing only. Lighting for the mini storage development as presented at the hearing by the applicant, signing for the development shall be non-illuminated and/or on a dimmer switch that restricts light after dark. Three, copies of the findings and recommendations of the Joint City Planning and Zoning Commission have been forwarded to Glasgow City Council, which are hereby adopted by the Glasgow City Council and are attached to this ordinance as Exhibit B and incorporated herein by reference. Now therefore be it ordained by the City of Glasgow, Kentucky as follows. Section one, the findings and recommendations of the Joint City-City Planning and Zoning Commission, copies of which are attached here to as Exhibit B, are hereby approved in all respects. Section two, the property located 1,200 feet northeast of the Happy Valley Road and north El Rogers Wells Boulevard intersection, and at the intersection of Magnolia Drive and north El Rogers Wells Boulevard, contains 6 plus or minus acres under review 10.95 plus or minus acres more or less, be rezoned from B2 General Business District to I1 Light Industrial District classification. The real property covered by this ordinance being more particularly described in Exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference with the following binding elements. A, mini storage warehousing is the only industrial use for the property and as shown in the concept drawing. B, no access is to occur along Magnolia Drive for the mini storage development. C, all lots along Magnolia Drive shall be residential for single-family housing only. D, lighting for the mini storage development as presented at the hearing by the applicant. E, signage for the development shall be non-illuminated or on a dimmer switch that restricts light after dark. Section three, all future development of this property shall comply with the requirements of the Development Plan Ordinance adopted by the Glasgow City Council on December 30, 1991. Section four, the Mayor of Glasgow is empowered and directed to complete any documents on behalf of the City of Glasgow necessary to implement this action. Section five, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law. Harold Armstrong, Mayor, attest, Mona Simmons, City Clerk, first reading September 12, 2022.
Having heard the first reading of this ordinance, do I have a motion to accept?
Motion by Witcher.
Have a motion by Councilmember Witcher.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Honeycutt.
I gotta, can I ask you a question, Kevin? Could they have done the mini warehousing, leaving it the same business?
No. Storage warehouse, any kind of mini storage or any of that is only permitted in an industrial zone, it's not permitted in our commercial zoning.
Any other questions?
May I have one question? Evan, seems like in the hearing that was held, the planning and zoning, a lot of discussion was on the property that was along Magnolia Drive.
Yes, sir.
And that property along Magnolia Drive, right now, is B2.
That's correct, yes.
In the binding agreements, they said that that, all the property on Magnolia Drive would be single-family residence.
Correct.
Does that tip, as referred to in all the minutes, does that need to be rezoned from B2 to R1?
No, the binding elements itself has concluded that it would remain or be conveyed into an R1 classification.
Okay.
So, and due process was given for the public hearing at the planning commission level, and at that time, they restricted that section, that small section that is in the northeast corner at the intersection of Magnolia, to just an R1 classification for single-family residence.
So it would say that's R1?
Yes.
Then so the B2 is removed from that?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So that's all seven of those lots?
Yeah, they would continue on, they would continue on to the intersection of Magnolia to El Rogers Wells. Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you, Kevin. All those approved, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, first reading passes. Next ordinance, next item is ordinance first reading, 2022, an ordinance amending Glasgow zoning ordinance, rezoning property located 109 and 135 Moran Street, formerly Myrtle Street, containing 0.75 acres more or less, from light industry to B3 Highway Service Business.
City of Glasgow Ordinance Number 2022 dash blank, an ordinance amending Glasgow zoning ordinance, rezoning property located at 109 and 135 Moran Street, formerly Myrtle Street, containing 0.75 acres more or less, from I1 Light Industrial District to B3 Highway Service Business District. It appearing that Glass Holdings LLC owner applicant has requested a zoning change for the property located at 109 and 135 Moran Street, formerly Myrtle Street, containing 0.75 acres more or less. A schematic drawing of said property subject to rezoning is attached here to as Exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference. Number two, a trial-type due process hearing concerning said proposed zoning change was held on July 18, 2022, at 7:00 PM by the Joint City-City Planning and Zoning Commission, resulting in the recommendation by the commission that the property here and after described be rezoned from I1 Light Industrial District to B3 Highway Service Business District classification. Three, copies of the findings and recommendations of the Joint City-City Planning and Zoning Commission have been forwarded to the Glasgow City Council, which are hereby adopted by the Glasgow City Council and are attached to this ordinance as Exhibit B and incorporated herein by reference. Now therefore be it hereby ordained by the City of Glasgow, Kentucky as follows. Section one, the findings and recommendations of the Joint City-City Planning and Zoning Commission, copies of which are attached here to as Exhibit B, are hereby approved in all respects. Section number two, the property located at 109 and 135 Moran Street, formerly Myrtle Street, containing 0.75 acres more or less, be rezoned from I1 Light Industrial District to B3 Highway Service Business District classification. The real property covered by this ordinance being more particularly described in Exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference. All future development of this property should comply with the requirements of the Development Plan Ordinance adopted by the Glasgow City Council on December 30, 1991. Section four, the Mayor of Glasgow is empowered and directed to complete any documents on behalf of the City of Glasgow necessary to implement this action. Section five, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law. Harold Armstrong, Mayor, attest, Mona Simmons, City Clerk, first reading September 12, 2022.
Having heard this first reading of ordinance number 2022, do I have a motion to accept?
Motion, Benel.
Have a motion by Councilmember Benel. Second, Norris. Second by Councilmember Norris. All those approved, signify by, yes?
What's the significance of changing this? You know, this is going the opposite direction as the other property.
So the properties, as you can see in your packet there, only together, only 0.75 total acres. The minimum lot size in your industrial zoning classification is 1 acre, so right now, both properties are below the minimum threshold for that, which by state statute are considered existing non-conforming structure or lots. So in an effort to make those conforming, and I guess the applicant wanted to have a more opportunity to sell it or whatever, he applied for that commercial zoning, which puts it in conformance with our zoning map and our zoning classification at that point.
Kevin, there's a commercial use, business use there now presently, right?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Any other questions? I have a first and a second, all those approved, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, ordinance first reading passes. Next item is Resolution Number 2022, a resolution authorizing the City of Glasgow, Kentucky dispose of surplus equipment pursuant to the law that the Glasgow Parks and Recs Department and the Department of Public Works have designated a surplus.
City of Glasgow Resolution Number 2022 dash. City of Glasgow, resolution number twenty-two dash blank, a resolution authorizing the City of Glasgow, Kentucky to dispose of surplus property pursuant to law that the Glasgow Parks and Recreation Department and Department of Public Works have designated a surplus. Be hereby resolved, whereas by the City of Glasgow, Kentucky as follows. Number one, that the Glasgow Parks and Recreation Department six six one O has a two thousand and eleven Chevrolet HHR that has been designated a surplus and is listed on Exhibit A that needs to be disposed of. Number two, that the Glasgow Department of Public Works Street Department thirty-three ten has a two thousand and eleven sweeper truck that's been designated a surplus and is listed on Exhibit B that needs to be disposed of. Section three, pursuant to KRS four twenty-four point one thirty subsection one subsection B, that the items listed above will be sold by electronic auction following publication including URL for the auction site and shall be disposed of pursuant to law. Be further resolved by the City of Glasgow, Kentucky, that Harold Armstrong, Mayor of the City of Glasgow, shall be and hereby is authorized and directed to execute any and all documents necessary to complete the disposal of these items pursuant to law, so adopted this twelfth day of September two thousand twenty-two. Harold Armstrong, Mayor attests, Mona Simmons, City Clerk.
Motion, Lowery.
Second, Kurt Patrick.
Motion by Councilmember Lowery, and a second by Councilmember Patrick. All those approved, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. That ends a pretty lengthy meeting, and I have several announcements. Saturday, September seventeenth, Extreme Fitness Five K Run Walk, this is a virtual walk, meaning that you can participate anywhere in this event. Additional information is on our Facebook and our web pages. Saturday, seventeenth, Entertain Glasgow presents Groove and Glow at the Glasgow Airport. The gates open at four o'clock. Please bring your blankets and lawn chairs for seating. There will be entertainment, there'll be kiddie rides, there'll be several, just as like it was last time we were able to hold it, except bigger and better. So make that on your calendar. September the nineteenth, nine AM, which is a Monday, there'll be a proclamation signing for National Adult Day Service Week at Just Family Adult Day Services at one oh two Upper Treet Way, that's there across from the hospital in Glasgow. Saturday, excuse me, Saturday, September the twenty-fourth, nine AM, Glasgow VMPW Club presents arts and crafts on the, on the square, fair on the square, that'll be starting at nine AM. That'll be right downtown, there'll be a lot of activities like it has been in the past. Our scheduled city council meeting, next one is Monday, September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, seven PM here at City Hall Chambers. Is there any other announcements? Oh, wait a minute, I've got one more. I'm glad, I'm glad I asked that. Thursday, September the twenty-second, starting at eight thirty AM, and it'll go to approximately three thirty PM at WKU Glasgow Campus five hundred Hilltop Way. There's a workshop, and the topics are about utility scale solar workshop for public officials, any community leaders, and anybody that's, uh, wants to know about the environmental safety impacts of solar energy, uh, all about solar energy and what they can do for your community. And that's given on, uh, the gentleman that's, uh, Center for Solar, for, uh, Energy Education is Mr. Chris Fields, and he's here in the crowd tonight. So if you have any questions about that after the meeting, feel free to ask him. Now, is there any other questions or any other announcements?
I would like to say one thing, um, I'm going to be going to the KLC conference. That way, I will be late coming back on Friday, so I will still get your agenda out, it just may be later than normal, but I will get it out.
We may be able to cancel the next meeting. All we did tonight, we may not have anything. No other announcements? Motion to adjourn, and you are adjourned. To thank this body and everybody out in the crowd for sitting through this and making it happen. Thank y'all.